Meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for, let's see, Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. Let's begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Let's see, go through the usual announcements and remind everybody who will address the board to make sure the microphone's turned on and you speak clearly into it so the folks at home can hear you. Please make sure applicants and members of the public identify yourself for the record when you begin to speak. After tonight, our next planning board meeting is June 21st, 2022, at 7:00 PM in this room. Let's see, let's appoint Nelson into a voting position. Everybody else here is a full member, right?
Yes.
So that brings us to six.
For Paul or, actually, for Paul would be the...
Yeah, it sounds good. Thank you for that. And that completes our call to order. Planning and zoning administrators report. Tim, do you have a report for us?
Just a couple of brief items. First off, just to give the board a heads up, the town manager and I have discussed making some tweaks to the capital improvements process. So I actually sent out the letter to departments and the other agencies today to try to get the CIP process started a little earlier than normal, in the hopes that we will have CIP presentations in September, rather than doing it at the end of the year when we're stuck with holidays and trying to find people in the middle of budget season. So our hope is that the CIP can be a much more useful tool to both the council and the school board and MVD's board as they go through their budget process, that we have that plan in place prior to the actual budget process starting. So that's just to give the board a heads up so we can expect the CIP to be in front of you sometime in early fall, rather than the beginning of winter.
Second thing... Thank you for that, Tim. Thank you for that. Let me know if there's anything I can do to encourage that to play out that way.
Absolutely. The second thing is just an update on where the staff and I are with the update to the subdivision regulations. As many of you are probably aware, we lost our environmental engineer, Kevin Anderson. So we are back down to one professional engineer supporting Kyle Fox in the Public Works Department right now, and that really does tie up Dawn Toomala's time. I had been working with Kevin on some of the engineering requirements and standards for the subdivision regulations. Unfortunately, he left before we could finish doing that work. I have chatted with the town manager again on this and with Dawn, what I think we're going to do is utilize some of the consultant services line in my budget to engage our peer review consultant, Fosse &amp; O'Neil, to assist us with some of the engineering requirements in the new regs, once I'm able to get Dawn to give me a 10,000-foot view of the goals and objectives of what she wants to see for standards and whatnot, for roads and drainage and things of that nature. So I'm hopeful we can get that process back off the ground. It was my real hope that we'd have those adopted by now, but just the amount of time and effort that has gone into the MS4 process with Public Works just hasn't made that able to happen. So I'm always reluctant to spend my budget when I don't need to, but in this case, I think we've waited long enough and it's, it'll be money well spent to get this moving forward, because I'd really like to get those subdivision regulations caught up to speed like we do with the site plan regulations. So that's my quick little update for tonight.
Thank you for the report. Any questions from, for the staff from the board? The only thing that I would sort of add to the discussion is a housekeeping item. A couple of us have terms that are ending in the end of June, and so you and you, if you're interested in reappointment, send an email to the town to...
I have done so.
Done so. I did so as well. And if you haven't, if you don't want to, obviously, that's a choice, but we'd rather keep you.
We'll talk if you don't want to.
Yeah, we'll twist your arm a little bit. Other than that, I don't have anything else for Tim or for planning and zoning administrators' report. Thank you for that. Tim, we're on to consent agenda, and the only item listed on the consent agenda is the staff's recommendation on regional impact determinations.
I will be approved the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda?
Question, what is the item? Can you tell us what the...
It is, it's the staff's recommendation on regional impacts.
Yes.
For the three plans, the UDM plan, excuse me, the UDM site plan, the Boucher subdivision, and the Anagnost site plan that are all on tonight's agenda.
Okay, UDM.
That's the 105 DW.
The agenda today.
It's basically the items on tonight's agenda, other than the earners' project.
All right, I didn't recognize. Thank you.
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Before we jump further into the agenda, if anybody is here looking for the Dick Anagnost matter, item seven, the applicant has requested a continuance, which I anticipate the board would grant, and you need not stay here and wait around to hear that happen. Save you most of your evening if you're going to wait for that. Item four on the agenda, UDM Group LLC as the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan review for a change of use from a former bank to an automotive service use, and to construct a 9,250-square-foot building addition with associated site improvements. The parcel's located at 105 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Oxford Conservation District, tax map 2D, lot 21-1. It is our case planning board 2022-22. And, Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This site, many people may be familiar with, is the former DCU Credit Union on DW Highway, just to the south of RH Cars, that has been sitting vacant for about a decade now, since they moved over to Merrimack Premium Outlets. The applicant that's here before you tonight also should be familiar. If you recall, a year or so ago, there was a site plan approved for Ultimate Bimmer, a car dealer and auto service use at the corner of Herrick and DW Highway. For various reasons, the applicant has decided to move away from that project due to some easement issues that have constrained the ability to do the development as he had wanted to. So what we're here tonight to discuss is a about 9,200-square-foot building addition to the existing building on the site. This would be, for now, only for automotive service use. There may be a future project that comes forward for sales, however, that would require a trip to the zoning board first. So the only thing here before you tonight would be the automotive service use and the building addition and the site improvements that I'm sure Mr. Peterson will go through tonight.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the project.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Matt Peterson with Keach-Norstrom Associates here representing the change-of-use application of 105 DW Highway for the Ultimate Bimmer Services, which specialize in BMW car repair and maintenance. I would say all my notes here, that Tim just said everything I've got here, so it's kind of going to be a quick night. No, just kidding. As you all know, this is the DCU building. I think you've seen a few different uses come through, from a marijuana dispensary to a couple of other different things that we brought forward and stuff like that on the site. The 10 years it's been sitting there is kind of strange. I think it's a very nice location. Just kind of giving you a bird's-eye view of it here. This is the site located just north of Henry Clay Drive, and this is the Mass Road that goes down to the sewer treatment plant for the town of Merrimack. I think most of you probably know where this site is, so I'll get you to the site plan that we proposed. The existing site, like we said, is located at 105 DW Highway, just north of Henry Clay Drive. We're on the east side of DW Highway. We have existing water on-site, but we have septic. We do not have sewer at this location in town. It's about 700 feet south of us at Henry Clay Drive, makes, and it's on the opposite side of the road as well. I thought it would have gone down the Mass Road to the sewer plant, but it actually goes south, quite south of that road there, down to the plant. So this site is on, currently on septic and town water. It's approximately 5.49 acres in size. It's tax map 2D, lot 221-1, and as we said, it was the future, previous home of the DCU Bank. Currently, we have two curb cuts that we're looking to maintain on DW Highway. I would say the majority of this site will look the same pre to post, but really, I think these guys have done a very interesting job of incorporating a building addition onto what was out there. And as the architectials, you'll see that we've submitted to you, it's very nice, the way it kind of fits into this location. So again, this is Zone Industrial 1, slopes off to the back. We've got some wetlands in the back corner here. That's where all of our drainage analysis was done for the site. The next sheet that we had put into your package there is just our removals and demo plan. As you can see, 90% of the work, or almost all the work, is being done behind the existing building. Really just going to be ripping up that pavement to put in the 9,250-square-foot addition onto this building here. So this just calls out little things like removing the bank signs that are still on-site for entrance and exits, stuff like that, removing the pavement, but pretty minor stuff that you've seen from us beforehand. Then we get to the non-residential site plan. The addition, as I said, is located right here, approximately 9,250 square feet. It will attach to the existing building. We've shown some re-striping of the area in here, basically reclaim this area and re-stripe it for customer parking. This was one of the three lanes that was coming into the site. We've also proposed that to be two-way traffic at that location now, because it was wide enough with the original design to be done that way. It allows, you know, the bank was a little bit different in the sense that you, it wasn't easy to move around the whole building. If you parked in front, you couldn't get to the back. If you went to the drive-thru, you kind of had to come out and go around to the drive-thru. So we wanted to make this site that nobody had to go out onto DW Highway to utilize it. So we proposed two-way traffic around the backside of the building here, and then two-way traffic where it was once where the lanes were coming in. That allows us to keep everything contained on-site as we move around with our vehicles and stuff like that. Again, the previous one had everything kind of going, getting off and coming back on as you went around the site. We just did a little striping up front of the site plan, but again, the parking's existing out front here. We're really just ripping up the back area to be able to put the building on that we're looking to do. The grading plan, which is sheet four, pretty minor grading improvements that we were able to do on the site here. It laid out very well that we're able to saw cut the pavement at this location here, saw cut the pavement on this location here, drain this sheet flow this back to a swale along the backside of the property line, and then sheet flow this back to a swale here. All collects in a sediment for bay right here, goes into a nice, clean infiltration basin, and then discharges off the property. Just to give you numbers on the 2, the 10, and the 25-year, obviously, staff has reviewed it, and Fosse &amp; O'Neil has gone through the reviews. We've reduced the pre and posts on all three storms. Two-year storm goes from .87 to .79, not a lot, but enough. 10-years, 1.72 to 1.54, substantial, and then the 25 goes down from 2.64 to 2.4. So again, we were able to put in a nice pond in the back here, which helps us to detain some of the water as it slowly dissipates out. And as far as the Fosse &amp; O'Neil comments, we got those this morning. We've had a chance to review them. We have not gone through or made any changes to the plans yet, as, again, they were dated January 6th. We got them this morning, so just yesterday. But it's very clean, and I think staff had made a recommendation tonight for approval, so I think you'll know that things were pretty clean with the reviews and the plans that we put forward. Next one is just the erosion control plan. This is just to meet a lot of the state and town requirements, make sure that these guys got a staging area, once they get their material on-site, construction entrances, erosion control around the back to protect the wetlands, the stuff that you would see on our typical erosion control plans. Landscaping plan, even though this is substantially planted and landscaped, as you said, for the last 10 years, I don't think a lot of it's changed or died, actually. I think it's in a good location, with some rain and soils must be decent. But we are proposing 30, 26 new trees on-site, and this plan outlines those 26 new trees to meet your requirement, and we basically put them in front, which I think is going to make a very nice streetscape as we go down the road. One of the things this plan outlines very nicely, Nelson, is this beautiful sidewalk that goes all the way down Daniel Webster Highway, my whole property already.
Good work.
And I didn't have to do anything except have the survey or pick up the sidewalk. So that was nice to see.
If I can just interject briefly, just for the board's information, though the DCU site had a plan, there really wasn't a lot of information that we had in our files in terms of survey data or anything. If you remember, that was one of the things we struggled with when the dispensary was looking at this site, was there was a lack of boundary information, topography and all that stuff. So Matt's firm did have to do a fair amount of work to get this to be submitted in the place that it is today.
Yeah, we didn't go for the full site plan waiver or any of that old stuff, and like you said, it wasn't, there wasn't a lot to use, so it was difficult. Next sheet outlines our lighting plan. One of the comments you will notice from staff and from Fosse &amp; O'Neil is that we originally were going to ask for a waiver to meet the uniformity rate and to meet the foot candles. However, I think most board members probably understand, security in this area, and really in this day and age, I would say, security seems to be becoming more and more of an issue. My client would rather not build a fence around his whole property if he doesn't have to, so we are going to, we're going to resmit this lighting plan that meets all the town's requirements. We're not going to ask for any waivers or variance on that. We're going to light the site up so that it's lit. He's going to put security cameras. He's going to try and handle any vandalism or that, that way to begin with.
This was one of the unusual requests, that would have been to be below the minimum required lighting, so this is actually bringing it up to the minimum standard that we require in the regulations.
And one of the reasons we were trying to utilize existing poles out there and some of the existing lighting, but after the comments came back and hearing what's going on next door, they realized that, and we're going to, like I said, this plan will meet the requirements. So no waivers will be requested from this application. And the rest of the plans are just the typical site details that we would put in any type of package for you guys. Next.
All right.
I'm going to give you an overview, just to leave this up there, but this is the overview. So you see, here's the existing DCU bank addition. Propose the drive-in two doors here to get back to basically where our bays are in the back location. You know, I mean, beautiful glass that you're going to see from the street as you come in. This is hidden in the back. I think it's a very clean building in the back there, you know, looking to do the BMW services that we have. And here's a door coming out the side that's there. So this would be your, your front facade. And again, I think that's pretty much it. I really answer any questions or comments you guys have. I also have Scott with me from North Point that can answer any questions on kind of construction stuff, and we have the owner in the back as well, if you have any questions for him.
Thank you, Matt, for the presentation. Board members, our first task is to decide whether the application's complete and contains enough information for us to make a decision. What's the will of the board?
I think we are complete. Are we not...
Seems that way.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
We'll make a motion to accept it as complete then.
Hold a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? 6-0-0 to find the application complete. The staff had initially talked about a waiver, but the applicant has represented that they want to amend their plan so that the lighting waiver isn't needed. Does the board have any general discussion with the applicant about the overall project? Nelson?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Let me turn this on. Is there a car wash involved in this, Matt?
There is a wash bay involved in this, yes. It is not a car wash with spinning things like that, but it'll be a wash bay area that we can wash and clean the cars.
And you still, your on-site septic is how you dispose of the wastewater?
Yeah, so what we are proposing to do is, so we just finished Newberry Fire Station up in Newberry, and they have to wash off the equipment after they go into fires, and it can have different stuff in it, so we couldn't put it right into the septic system, the sewer. So we did a holding tank with alarms on it, and then we'd have Clean Harbors come and clean it out. So that's what we're going to propose here with that, and we're working with Dawn on that right now. So it would be a separate system just for the wash bay that would have an alarm, and then Clean Harbors or something along those lines would come and pump it out once it got to a certain level.
Well done.
Okay, yeah. Okay, it wasn't clear from what I had read which way it was. Do you have enough parking for storing cars that are awaiting service on the property? I don't know how you came up with your parking, but if it's the normal way, maybe, maybe you need more. I just ask the question.
Well, we used your, you know, we used the per bay and kind of outlined them there on the plan, so we met the town requirements on it there. We required 24, and we got 44. I felt like 44 spaces for eight bays was...
Sounds like enough, yeah.
That's, I mean, these guys are comfortable. We felt it met what staff was looking for and comfortable from that standpoint.
Okay, good. You brought up the business about putting a fence around this, and I noticed the site next door has added a fence, which doesn't make it look more attractive, but apparently, has there been some issues down there that have caused them to do that, or...
I'm pretty sure everybody I talked to, from Derry to here, there's issues with catalytic converters being stolen off cars and everything, yes. There's stuff, Southern New Hampshire has had their issues with incidents, but we do not want to go with the fence. Like I said, we're going to put in some cameras, light it up. He's even talked about maybe having a night security man to not do a fence. So we're trying to keep this a very clean site, but you may see us back if it, if things happen, but we're hoping it doesn't.
Okay, that's, that's good that you did that. I'm glad. Now, clarify for me one more time about the one-way in, one-way out. Are both of those entrances two-way entrances?
Yes.
Yes. Is that, I wanted to hear.
What I was referring to was that on this plan, the original...
Yeah.
Had one-way coming in here and one, two, three, four lanes coming to the ATM.
Yeah.
That's what, yeah, that was the bank.
I understand.
So then with us, we propose it right here to be two-way at this location coming out. We have, we put a stop bar here, which wasn't there beforehand down here to do that. So we have all the widths and stuff like that, and we have two-way to get everybody around the back of the building and that.
Do we need state approval? Because this is a state road, right?
We're going to need verification from the state that either they need to update or amend the permit, or if nothing's necessary. But that is one of our standard comments, anytime we're in a state jurisdiction.
Okay, I didn't see it in the notes, and I...
It's standard condition number, whatever, about state permits.
Anyway, okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Nelson. Other members of the board, have any comments or questions? Let's do our public hearing. Are there any members of the public or butters who wish to weigh in? See, yes, yes, go on forward. No, all set. Okay, everybody's all set. So we'll close the public hearing. My, Matt, I liked the idea of finally seeing something go on here. I think it's, it's a really unique site, and I think that it's good that DCU or whoever continues to own it has maintained that the lawn and the landscaping and the sprinklers run, and that's why it, you know, still looks in the condition it's in. But it is sort of right there on our southern, not too far from the southern border with Nashua, and that's sort of one of the first things you see when you come into town, and having it be in active business again would be good. I'm, I don't know if I'm, as a planning board member, whether we necessarily take a deep dive into architectural standards, although we've got them, but that's a lot of polar white on a really big building. And I know that most of it is facing the sides and the back, and that can be whatever color you want. The side that faces the street...
It's water white.
That's, and I know that there's going to be some trees and some landscaping. I'm trying to understand that, but convince me that that isn't going to be a bit stark as, I don't, you know, it's certainly attractive for a dealership, but pretty stark. Come on forward, it's your application.
Sure.
Come speak forward. Yeah, come on forward, introduce yourself and...
My name is Corey Knight. I own Ultimate Bimmer Services and ultimately UDM Group with my wife, Heather. And to get a good idea on the white shading, there's a Subaru dealership that just went in in Hudson that has the same paneling on it. So this paneling isn't actually flat, it's textured, so what it actually creates is like micro shadows or shadows on the finish, and it actually makes it look a lot more muted than a traditional white panel. So it's not going to be as bright or offensive.
Yeah, I didn't want to call it offensive.
Well, I mean, let's call, I mean, that is, I mean, it's visually, if it was something that was really bright white, you'd look at it and it would hurt your eyes, and that's not what we're going for at all. Another thing with the, the reason we chose white as opposed to another color, A, we wanted it to go clean, but B, also, 90% of the BMW dealerships are white, and we want to keep that same kind of brand recognition. But I mean, as far as concerns on, it's, it's not, it's, it's almost more of a grayish white or a muted white than it is a bright white, and I think part of that is because of the textured finish that it actually is. If you, and you have any concerns on that, I mean, a perfect representation is the Subaru dealership that just went in. It's a very similar build.
Okay. Well, we're asking some other questions. I'll look at the Google Street View. Well, if it's just been built, I won't see it, but I won't be there. Anyway, I, I am fairly reluctant to take a deep dive into architectural standards, even though I know we can in our regulations. I just think it's one more planning board I'll really have a light hand or a light touch on things, but other members of the board, comments?
I have one more, yeah.
Yeah, the only, the only issue I had with the white was if it was stark white and the afternoon sun hits it, we're going to be blinding half the traffic coming up and down the DW. So as long as that doesn't happen, that's okay. If it does, then you may get a visitation from Merrimack's finest to say, hey.
Yeah, put some trees or some plants, muted. What's the distance back off of the road for that? It's, looks like it's got to be near 100 feet.
Just, just to get to the front property line, you're fairly well off the travelway of the road. This is a fair amount of that landscaped area that's actually within the state right of what...
As I recall, there's a little bit of an elevation there, too.
About 110 feet.
From the edge of travelway.
From the edge of travel.
All right. With your addition of trees and your representations about the way that the panels are textured, I'm certainly asked my question, I'm satisfied.
I got one more I missed when I was earlier. I noticed you have the dumpster in the front of the building, and I didn't see a lot of planting around it, but in fact, I think you show a tree next to it, which is okay, but I wonder if you can do something to screen that a little more.
What?
We're currently working with staff to relocate that to the back area.
Okay, thank you.
Where did I miss it? I don't see it in the elevation.
It doesn't show there. It shows on...
It's on the plan.
It's on the plan, so...
Yeah.
Oh.
We're somewhere in the back of the building now.
Okay.
That'll be a revision then.
Oh, okay.
That was something that came up, it's still weebery.
So Matt was away from the microphone, but for the record, he represented that the dumpster will be in the back in the crook of the building of the addition, or somewhere there about. He's working with staff on a location. Thank you for that. Not that it makes a whole lot of difference, but the driveway going around the back of the building doesn't show up on your elevations. The one that sort of...
They aren't there.
Elevations are about looking at the building more than anything else, so. Other comments or questions? What is the will of the board with respect to any final action on the plan? Nelson?
I will make a motion to approve the plan as submitted with the changes suggested by the applicant and those items that are in the memo from, I guess it's from, it's from community developed, I don't have a name on it.
It's actually Robert's memo, but that was a carryover from a different memo.
Things like that happen, yeah.
All right, so Nelson made a motion to grant conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the memo and the representations. Brian's got a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? 6-0-0. Thank you. Sorry, the first site didn't work out, but now you got a second one.
That's all right.
And I'm thrilled that you're using the DCU building. It's time to get something in there.
Yep. I look forward to seeing you again when you decide to sell cars on the site.
It'll be a little time.
Might be a little while. Okay, item four, oh, for, I saw a couple folks come in while we were dealing with that item. If anybody came in specifically interested in item seven, the Dick Anagnost proposal, that applicant has asked for a continuance, so we probably are not going to have a hearing on that item today. Item five on our agenda is Bernard Boucher revocable trust. As the applicant and owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a two-lot subdivision. The parcel is located at sixty-nine Bean Road in the R one residential by map and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map six B, lot one forty-one, case planning board twenty-two-two-two-three. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This project was recently a front of the zoning board of adjustment, initially requested a three-lot subdivision, which was denied by the Z B A, then came back and was granted variances to allow a two-lot subdivision with one of the lots having less than the required amount of frontage, a hundred and ninety-four and a half versus the two fifty that is required, and the other lot to have about sixty-seven thousand square feet of contiguous upland where a hundred thousand square feet is required in the R one zoning district. Those were both granted at the board's April meeting. We're now beyond the appeal period, no rehearing requests have been filed on that, so that variance is now subject to the planning board's approval for this minor two-lot subdivision. Staff can report that there, there are really no significant issues other than what is outlined in the staff memo. The one item that the applicant did request a waiver from four oh six one R for the sidewalks, but since this is a minor subdivision, the board can determine that that is not applicable, and by consensus can say that it doesn't apply under the section four oh seven of the regulations.
Thank you, Tim, and thank you for coming. Please introduce yourself and let us know about the project, and if I mispronounced your name, my apology.
You did not.
Good.
You're the first one to get it right, actually.
Oh, boy, all right.
Yeah, it's Bernard Boucher, everyone calls me Ben, and I'm the owner of the property.
Excellent. Matt, let us know, what's the project about?
I'm Matt Peterson with Keats Northridge and Associates, representing Ben here for sixty-nine Bean Road. As staff had commented, Ben came to me about six months ago looking to subdivide this property. You can see from the aerial here that Babusak Brook runs through like this, pretty narrow, and then you have the wetland figures that kind of run on either side of the brook. So, pretty substantial crossing to get back to this beautiful land that's right here. But just in, even this day and age where homes are almost a million bucks now, I mean, the crossing is just astronomical to kind of do that. So, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense for us. So, we came originally, as he said, with the possible of a three-lot subdivision. The three lots mirrored the four lots that were right here to the north. We are right on a zone line, right between the R one and the R, and these ones are allowed a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and reduced size, and then right here it goes to two fifty. So, that's why I thought my request was reasonable. We were denied with that, that is fine, so we've come back with a two-lot subdivision that then was granted. This is the overall parcel, comes down to here. This is town land in this location here, as well in this location here. Beautiful trails that go all the way around down to the brook that you can walk and get access from, from the backside. Then, like I said, you can see the brook comes through, and then you've got the wetland finger up in here, comes down along here and back, and then on the backside, same things, it's expanded more so than just the size of the brook itself. Ben currently lives in the house situated right at this location here. This house is the one that we got the variance to allow the hundred and ninety-four point five-six feet of frontage where two fifty was required. But again, when you looked at how this was left, you know, and this lot right here is the exact same one that was allowed in a different district, hundred and fifty feet of frontage, so it kind of looked like they were going to do three lots in the future, but it just didn't work out that way. So, now we got a nice five-acre lot right here. As Tim said, the area on this side of the brook is sixty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-one square feet, where a hundred thousand square feet was required. So, that was the variance that we obtained for this lot, and then the frontage one for this lot. We've shown a blown-up of each lot that was there. Again, we've done the shore land setback that is located here from the brook. It's outside of his pool and his house and stuff like that, and obviously would be on our future lot. We then showed a grading plan to kind of show you what the land looks like. It drops off to the brook in the back here about eight to ten feet, but nice little building envelope to put a new home in this location. It's a minor subdivision. I know I asked for the waiver on sidewalk just to be consistent. If the board feels that we do need it, then I'd ask for the waiver. If they feel that this is a minor and it doesn't adhere to this, that would be great too. And I think I'm going to keep it simple and ask for any comments that you have, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. As before, board members, our first task is to decide whether the application is substantially complete and contains sufficient information to invoke the board's jurisdiction.
Also moved.
Is there a second? Second by Nelson. If there's any discussion, then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero to find the application complete. Let's see. The applicant has had this discussion about sidewalks, and as Matt pointed out, we've typically had two ways to approach this. One, to decide that as a minor subdivision, it's not necessary to have sidewalks in the first place, or to grant a waiver. Typically, we choose the former more often than the latter.
And you only need a consensus of the board, you don't need a formal vote for that.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would agree that a sidewalk out on the country road isn't particularly useful. General discussion with the applicant about the two-lot subdivision and the rest of the plan? Nelson?
I have a couple kind of minor things. One thing was the, the map, let's see what page I'm on here, I'm on page, did May twelve, it's the, it just is map six B lot forty-one, one forty-one. This map shows the wetland, and it's got some strange sort of markings on it. One is apparently, is called the Babusak River, taken from Granite database, and it, that line is heavy dash with a gap in it, at least, I'm looking at.
Are you looking at this plan here, Nelson?
Yeah, I guess so. It's kind of hard to tell.
Can I approach the?
I'm on.
What sheet?
I was trying to find out what sheet I'm on.
It's one through three.
One or three, I'm in sheet two. Sheet two.
Okay.
And there is a, a sort of a line that says two hundred and fifty feet.
Yep, that's the shoreline protection.
Yeah.
So, Babusak Brook is considered shoreline protection.
That's part of the shoreline protection?
Yep.
Okay, that's not the, I didn't know if it was the high-water mark of the wetlands.
That's the two fifty shoreline buffer.
And then the next line, you see the flood zone? That's the flood zone based at two-ten? So, that's, so if you look up at the screen here, I can highlight them both here for you. Put my glass on so I can see. Okay, here's the, this line right here that's very light. This is the flood elevation line, and here's the text that says the elevation right there, and that runs down like this, okay?
Okay.
This line here is the two hundred and fifty-foot shoreline line from Babusak Brook, and then this line is the wetland setback of your forty-foot wetland setback. So, we have three different, you know, we have the wetland here that was created, we have a forty-foot setback that, then we have a two hundred and fifty-foot setback off the brook, and then we have the floodplain line that runs through here, which is two-ten, which I think we all know has dropped substantially since they redid that bridge down at the east end of this here that, not backing up as much of that two-ten, it probably needs to be redone at some point, but yes.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
The thing that got me.
Yep.
Was the, the line that now I see the brook is separate.
Yes.
Then there's this wetland.
Yes.
Next to that is a wetland.
Yep.
And it goes back, and it's bounded by a solid line and a gap. A solid line and a gap.
You mean like in here?
Yeah.
You know, this, you're right, there's two separate things, so we're looking at the two hundred and fifty-foot protection of the brook.
Yeah.
And that's from the edge of the brook, and then, but there's wetlands that have happened over time that's created out here, so you actually have another forty feet added on to that, so, you know, it's kind of double-dipping, I guess you'd say, but.
Okay, it looked like a mistake, but apparently not in the, okay, thank you for that clarification.
No.
Confused me for a minute. The, the garage is to be removed.
Yep.
That's, the garage is shown there, it doesn't say it's going to be removed, but that's the one that's going to be removed, right?
Yes, yep.
And another thing I noticed was, I see that our requirements now for property markers allow either a concrete post of four inches by four inches, or a granite marker. And I thought it was only granite that we allowed, and did that get changed?
That has not changed, that's from the current regulations, this is subdivision regulations that I have not yet been able to get into to finish amending. So, that's the requirement that's been in there.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Everybody uses granite, so I thought maybe granite was required.
That's, goes back to the regs that existed before I got here.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Thank you, Nelson. Thank you for your questions. Other members of the board? Barbara?
Got a question for you, humor me for a minute, and I'll get, it'll make sense when I ask the question. I see, according to the map, that there is a stone wall across the street from the, the frontage on this property. Is there a stone wall on your side? Because there's lots of stone walls on Bean, and the reason I'm asking it is that there is a state historical society project that's going on where we're actually mapping all of the stone walls throughout the state, and so we are trying to maintain them and keep the capstones in place.
So, here's Ben's driveway, this is Ben's driveway right here.
And I apologize, I didn't, I usually drive out to go see.
No, 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 it's okay, I didn't know either, but this is Ben's driveway, the first one, so the wall you're saying is over here on the opposite side.
Right, so does he have one on his?
I don't see anything there, yeah, I didn't think there was anything.
Not that you know of, yeah, because sometimes they throw boundary walls in there just for fun.
I've got one more photo, two here, right?
So, okay.
That's a little further down, yeah.
Because my question would have been, are you going to keep the wall?
Yeah.
From a sharp perspective.
That's never come up for discussion, so.
Yes, so if you don't think there's one there, I'm good.
Just, just to make you feel even better, Barbara, the, the new regulations are actually going to have stone wall requirements in them as well.
You know I'm going to have to bake you cookies for that.
I, I learned my lesson on stone walls from eleven years in London Dairy. They're very, very, very adamant about stone, stone walls in London Dairy.
All right. Other comments or questions by members of the board? Are there any butters or the members of the public who wish to weigh in on the application? Going once, going twice? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I think we already gathered our consensus on sidewalks, and so, board members, it's appropriate to consider what, if any, final action you would like to take.
We grant final, grant conditional final approval, subject to staff memo conditions.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Jamie's got the second, she was fastest. Okay. Motion in a second to grant conditional final approval, subject to the conditions in the staff memo. We didn't add anything or discuss anything here today, so I don't think there's anything more to add to that. With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six, zero, zero. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Item six on our agenda is Kerner's Car Care as the applicant, and DK, DKern Two L L C as the owner. Review for consideration of an amendment to a previously approved site plan proposing to modify a condition of approval, excuse me, regarding the issuance of financial guarantee for the construction of a sidewalk. The parcel's located at three eighty-six D W Highway in the C two general commercial, elderly housing overlay, and Aquifer Conservation Districts, tax map four D three, lot twenty-eight, case planning board twenty-two-two-two-four. Tim, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You may recall this was conditionally approved by the board back in January, and there was, for whatever reason, and staff has yet to really been able to figure out why this ended up happening, there is both a precedent condition regarding the financial guarantee for the construction of the sidewalk in front of this property, as well as a general condition regarding the completion of the sidewalk within six months before the certificate of completion would be issued by the building department. The applicant has come forth and has indicated that they absolutely have every intention of constructing the sidewalk, however, the requirement to put the financial guarantee up, plus then pay for the construction of the sidewalk, is a financial burden, and he's asking that the board remove the condition of approval regarding the precedent condition that the financial guarantee be required before the plan can be signed. Staff doesn't have any particular issue with that. We will still have enforcement capabilities should the applicant not be able to complete the sidewalk. So, our recommendation is that as long as the board is comfortable with eliminating precedent condition number eleven, and general and subsequent condition number seven, then the applicant would be able to move forward, and we'd recommend that you grant final approval tonight, because all of the other conditions precedent to this project have been met, would authorize the plans to be signed so that they can get going on the project moving forward.
Okay, good. Thank you, Tim. I have a question before we, to make sure I know what we're attacking. I understand the intent to remove number eleven, is number seven to be modified or deleted? Because it seems like the six-month piece could stay, but the financial guarantee.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong part, I was looking at, I wasn't looking at Robert's memo. You can leave the, the general, what we're saying essentially is that all general and subsequent conditions from the original approval would still apply to this, including number seven. So, we'd still have the six-month period once the construction starts.
Okay, so leave seven just as it is?
Just delete the precedent condition number eleven.
Okay. Now, seven mentions submitted the financial guarantee to complete the work. Do we need to edit that part out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now I know at least we're trying to attack. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's up.
Okay, Dave Kerner, owner of DKern L L C. When I started this process over a year ago for a zoning change, this has been a really expensive proposition that I have to go through. So far, I've spent fifteen thousand dollars on site plan and engineering plans. The town of Merrimack with consultation fees, twenty-eight-hundred. I just purchased the lights, they're over a thousand dollars. Striping's going to be a thousand dollars. Landscaping's going to be a thousand dollars. The sidewalks is going to be anywhere between seventeen to twenty thousand dollars. So, when this whole project gets done, it's going to be a minimum of a forty thousand dollars for me to do for a zoning change. And it's been a really, it's, it's a financial burden. It, it really is. So, for me to give the town of Merrimack, you know, I think it's a little light on the sidewalk, seventeen thousand dollars, where there's no contractor, he's going to want a portion of the money down halfway through the project, he's going to want to get another portion, and at the end, he's going to want to get paid. And as you know, contractors right now are very, very difficult to get. And the town is really, you know, they're requiring me that, you know, I spoke to the Public Works, and, you know, I got to go by the New Hampshire D O T spec book, traffic control, work zone, the list gets on, and it's going to be very difficult. I can't find a regular contractor to put this sidewalk in. He has to be bonded, so it's, it's, it's a difficult process. Obviously, if I would have known at the last meeting that the sidewalk is going to be close to twenty thousand dollars, I would have had a different opinion back then. I can tell you that. So, it's pretty hard on a small business guy.
Thank you for the presentation, and I, the, the only thing that I sort of want to explore with you more is what's your, you know, what have you got lined up for getting the sidewalk constructed and?
I've been working with, trying to get a contractor. I've got, you know, probably four, five, six leads. I've been working on that, and I'm going to continue to work on that and try to get the process going.
Okay.
And it, it may take some time, and that's why, again, I don't want to shell out, you know, eighteen or nineteen thousand dollars to the town of Merrimack, and it may take me three or four months to get a contractor.
Yeah, I don't want to put that burden on you either. I, but I just wanted to sort of know that we're, the sidewalk will get built and.
It is, I mean, I made the commitment, I'm going to get it done.
I, I understand, there's lots of occasions where we encounter site plans where someone completes parts of the things on the site plan, and the rest of it, I think they have the intentions, but somehow it seems to, you know, get pushed back on the calendar, and I just want to make sure we're not doing that.
And if you remember, the last time, we were supposed to get site approval, and then kind of at the last minute, the sidewalk got thrown in. So, again, T F Moran had, you know, I had done all the plans, then had to go back, now do the plan, send out surveyors again. It was kind of like, you know, tough on me that, or I wish you would have known in the beginning.
Yeah, I understand, I mean, it is in our regulations that sidewalks are required along D W Highway, so.
No, I understand that, but it should have been addressed previously. That's my point. That's my point.
It is a really important part of the, the middle part of town where there's some need for pedestrian ways and things like that. So it's a pretty important-
No, I mean, I agree, but there's nothing on the road. I mean, on the right or the left of me, there's no sidewalks. So it's going to get very little use. I mean, I need a new roof on my building. Well, I got to put a sidewalk in. I'm going to have to patch the roof.
I understand the burden. So you, you are looking for some contractors. You hope that you're going to find one when, within a couple, three months, or something like that?
Well, I, I'm going to, listen, I want to get this done. It's going to be more than, as soon as I get a contractor, make a commitment, we're going to move forward. The lights have already been purchased. I'm just waiting to, I'm going to get the lights done. I'm going to get the striping done, the landscaping done. That's all, the biggest project and the problem or project I'm going to have is the sidewalk.
Okay. Even taking a couple, three months, being that we're at the beginning of June, will put you to just about the tail end of the construction season.
I know.
And, you know, asphalt's still available, probably for another month or two after that.
Yeah.
But it starts to get, you know, pretty narrow. And that's the only concern that I have, is getting it done, and, you know, how do we know that we-
Listen, I want to get it done. I want to move on. I got other businesses and other properties I got to deal with, and this is something I just want to get done. And if I had a contractor tomorrow, I'd have him start. That's the bottom line.
Yeah, understand. And staff assures-
Everybody's business.
Yeah, that's true. Staff assures us that they've got, you know, the ability to make sure that it gets done. So I think, board members, thoughts, questions of the applicant?
Agreed.
Tim, since this is an amendment, there's no acceptance?
There is no acceptance. This is simply a, my recommendation would be to grant final approval of the project with the elimination of precedent condition eleven and the modification of item seven to that the sidewalk be completed within six months of the issuance of the certificate of unit completion.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. Brian, you get the second?
Go ahead.
Nelson, did you get any today? Yeah, you got some motions.
I got some.
Probably you've had twenty thousand over the years anyway.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Motion and a second to delete condition eleven and part of condition seven, so that the applicant is not required to put up the financial security for the construction of the sidewalk. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? There you go. Six-zero-zero.
Okay, so does the-
The, we will, I'll have the chairman sign the plan tonight before the end of the meeting, and then you'll be able to go to the building department and start the-
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item seven on our agenda is Dick Anegost as the applicant and owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a site plan to construct two multifamily residential buildings totaling forty-eight units. In accordance with the New Hampshire Workforce Housing Statutes, RSA six-seventy-four fifty-eight, the parcels located on Twin Bridge Road in the R-four residential, Oqfer Conservation, Town Center Overlay, Elderly Housing Overlay, and Planned Residential Development Overlay Districts. Tax map five-D-three, lot one-fourteen, case planning board twenty-twenty-two twenty-five. And we have a note from the applicant that they like a continuance until, which meeting?
July fifth. Now, just to give the board a reason why this is being continued, one of the conditions on the variance that was granted to allow this project to exceed the cap of four hundred units in the Commons planned unit development is that the planned unit development itself needs to be amended to reflect that. They had not done that to this point, so we will have a separate application that will be coming in to record a document that would serve as the amendment to that planned unit development in a similar fashion to what we did with Crosswoods Path when they did their recent building as well.
Just out of curiosity, Tim, what year was that?
The original approval on the Commons?
Yeah.
I want to say very early seventies. So I think it was just before or really early in your tenure.
Okay. So I, I was, I know I-
I know there's been several subsequent changes to it that you were definitely here for, but I don't know that you were here for the initial.
Okay. Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. We scheduled the meeting on July fifth? What did you do that for?
We did.
Yeah, that was not smart, was it?
Who's in charge here?
That's all on the count.
That happened. Okay, the applicant's requested a continuance to July five.
I have an architectural design review committee meeting in Concord that morning, too, so.
Oh, boy.
I also move.
All right. Is there a second? Motion and a second to continue to July fifth. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero. Okay, that one's continued. Item eight is discussion, possible action regarding-
Just make sure you note, this is the only public notice for that.
Oh, yes. Continued without further notice to a butters. Eight is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Tim, I'm going to yield the floor to you for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I had mentioned prior to the meeting to the people who were here beforehand, at the meeting on May seventeen, there was a request from Chris Ross to request an indefinite continuance to his site plan and conditional use permit for the self-storage facility he has proposed next to the bowling alley. The board ultimately, rather than granting that continuance indefinitely, opted to find the application incomplete. Unfortunately, because that project was noticed as both a conditional use permit and a site plan, there is no completeness process for a conditional use permit. So we have an error and issue with how that vote took place. There are only three options on a conditional use permit. You can either approve it, deny it, or continue it. There is no acceptance process. So that now is in limbo, great, based on the board's vote last month. Additionally, the request for, or the, if the board were to deny the conditional use permit for not being complete and keep the incomplete status for the site plan, before Mr. Ross would be able to resubmit that application, he would have to reapply from the beginning and repay over seven thousand dollars in application fees that were also associated with that project. Given that the primary reason for that request for continuance was that his mother had just finished a battle with a long-term sickness and had passed away within days of that meeting, I thought that it would be appropriate for the board to reconsider that vote from August, from May seventeen. And assuming that you do reconsider that vote, I would request that you grant a indefinite continuance, making sure that the applicant is under the understanding that he will have to re-notify a butters in accordance with that indefinite postponement.
All right. So board members, it's a two-step process. First one is to vote to reconsider, and then you vote to act on that reconsideration.
I'll move.
Move to reconsider. Is there a second? Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Six-zero-zero to reconsider it, and now the motion that-
The motion would be to continue both the conditional use permit and the site plan indefinitely with the requirement that the applicant re-notify the abutters by certified mail.
I'll defer to Brian.
I'll so move.
So moved. Is there a second for Brian's motion?
Jamie.
Jamie? Nelson, Nelson's got his hand up.
Well, I would let Jamie do it.
Trying to figure out all the different combinations. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You have discussion?
I would just, I mean, he may come back with that in two years.
I think that he did. He, he certainly may, and he'll face whatever regulations exist at the time that he submits it, but I think it is-
Is that customary?
It's-
Unusual?
It has happened. It's not very frequent that we've continued things indefinitely.
But it does happen.
But at the same time, I want to be respectful of the fact that there are a lot of application fees. And I don't want to sort of see someone-
There, it's, I would rather, instead of thinking of it as an indefinite continuance, we've had many times where it's been phrased as a, as a continuance to a date uncertain.
Right.
It's just that we don't know specifically when that date is. As he indicated in the letter he submitted last month, he intends to bring it back at some point, but given the circumstances in his life right now, he just does not, can't commit to when.
Yeah. He doesn't gain any rights by continuing it, and it doesn't put any burden on us. It just, and if he does take two years, whatever the regulations are with the time he comes forward, that's what he gets.
I think when we voted the last time, at least when I voted, I didn't have quite that same understanding. And I was concerned about having this hanging out there, if you will, that he could come in sort of any, any time he wanted and get back on an agenda just, and he, his history has been changing a lot. He's-
I, I fully understand, and I, I think, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of whoever made the motion and led the discussion that night. I honestly haven't watched the meeting. But I, I think it seemed like you were trying to be supportive of staff, because I was fairly adamant in my memos that I had not been getting the information from Chris that I had been requested repeatedly.
Yes.
But there were legitimate reasons for that, and the, the family situation, I think, was part of it. And I don't mean to speak about Casey, but Casey doesn't have the experience in her career at this point to have been able to think on her feet, to remember that the conditional use permit was part of that application, and that you shouldn't have been making an incomplete requirement.
And actually, it's the first part. It has to be voted before you could do the site plan. I think another part of that is it's quite different to grant an indefinite continuance before you've accepted the application. Once it's accepted, you're on a sixty-five-day clock, and things get all-
Yeah.
And, and he also gets the benefit of the regulations on the day that you've accepted it for the part of it that is subject to that. So, anyway, thank you for taking a look and reconsidering that. Are there other discussion or other action items anyone would like to bring up? Seeing none? None? Going once, twice, three? Then approval of the minutes of May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Approve has, move, we approve has distributed.
A motion to approve the minutes as distributed. Is there a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Question.
Of course.
The home health and hospice care sewer was a part of the discussion that night. And my question to staff is, does their sewer line go into Nashua or into Merrimack? Because they're right on the border there.
I think it's Nashua.
I believe that is the one that goes to the-
I believe that goes through the Penachuk Square pump station and into the Nashua system. And that, that one is very close to its limits, but I know that that's part of the sewer permitting that will go in through the, they still need to get their sewer discharge permitting through Public Works before they'll be able to get that permit.
Okay. We didn't mention that in the minutes, and we didn't mention it at the time of the discussion, because I didn't think of it, but subsequently-
It's, it's still our permit that they need to get, so there's, there's nothing out of the ordinary that the fact that it ends up at Nashua requires the board to do anything differently.
No, but we might remind them that they have a problem possibly.
Oh, there were, there were.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
No other questions?
No other questions about the minutes? It was more of a substantive what happened question than a minutes question, but, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero to approve the minutes. I'm sorry, what?
I was abstaining.
Oh, five-zero-one to approve the minutes with one abstention. There being no other business, we're at the item ten. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six-zero-zero to adjourn. Thank you all very much. Don't forget to turn microphones off.